You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 8th meeting for the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Let's call this meeting to an end. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Stone and do roll call for us, please.
Chair can. President Dunbar, you said she's going to be late.
She said she will be late.
Okay. And Samantha Aron.
Present.
Ralph Box.
Present.
Sam Paxton.
Present.
Rich Young.
I'm here.
And I'm here. Brad Adamski.
Present.
Fire Chief Gary Bending. Yeah.
He was absent. She has.
Police Chief Mark Flitz, Deputy Commissioner.
Present.
Park Board President Gene Paxton. Evidently, she's going to be absent. FZA President Matt Bowen, he's absent. And Building Commissioner Colton Enforcement Officer Brian Alexander.
Here.
Blood Point Administrator Andrew Bertruchini.
Is not here.
Okay. Enforcement Officer Brian, wait a minute, have one ahead of me. Plan Commission President Isaac Echo, he is definitely absent too. Website. And Technology Samantha Aron, a week, she was already thirty years here. And Road Commissioner Bob.
Recording in progress.
Are you here?
No.
Great. Thank you. If we want to adopt the meeting agenda, I believe the meeting agenda was sent out. And the writing will change it. Are there any other additions or comments needed from the council? Great. We will keep on moving.
And you can, on minutes, works as any other minutes, you can delete that. You've already approved all the minutes as far as I know.
Okay. So now we need to, we want to approve the meeting minutes for the June 10th, 2025 meeting, which is sent out for council review. Are there any questions, comments, submissions to the meeting minutes?
So in the session that Joan gave us that updated all the vouchers that we didn't approve at the last meeting, there was one May additional vouchers, but there was no description of what transpired at those.
I couldn't tell from the meeting minute what was going on. Do you remember?
Well, I, none of this is accepted.
Okay. So then it sounds like we cannot approve these minutes for other things?
Well, it's not that they were, we stopped to approve. In the meeting minutes, they're just listed with the ten things already. And there's no, no, God, we can't fire them.
Right. So it's clear for me to approve those vouchers or not?
Yeah. And that's what we call.
And so I'm guessing if Joan is not thirty right now, if you don't have her in the notes, I was not at that meeting. Then we, I think we need to do a little review before we can review, are we going to approve some of the vouchers, right?
Well, I think we could approve the minutes because.
With the comment that voucher, may vouchers, may additional vouchers were included.
I agree. There was actually, I forgot the following. It's May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five vouchers.
To May thirteenth ones?
Yes. It's a total of about two hundred nine thousand three hundred twenty-two ninety. That was not on the list. We did not approve these. So I don't know, Joan, where the status is of this. I saw Rich.
I'll give you that.
A paper copy in his folder today of those. So are we to review these again?
Which one?
May thirteenth.
I took that in there so you could see what was happening on May thirteenth, what's all the vouchers.
My notes from that meeting show that you approved May taxes, May thirty-first payroll week, pulled back to May thirteenth for whatever reason. If that makes sense, then it's on the.
I think Joan indicated that there was some still work to be done on this.
No, not on that, on the March ones. Because I have on my notes that you made us on the May thirteenth vouchers, you made a voucher to approve, but February thirteenth voucher.
And you did not approve these because I know, did not put it to the council of vote to approve them. Because of the two entries that I have, still have lingering questions on is the transfer of town funds from current bank to Horizon Bank.
Right.
For the purchase of a CD and funding of a checking account in an amount of a hundred and twenty thousand total.
Correct.
Those should not be on the vouchers. Confirm that with Susan Cowan of Baker Tilly.
She didn't say that couldn't be on there. She said you don't have to put them on there.
She said that they do not belong on the record anymore from her.
Mike, you must have gotten a different email.
Pardon?
You must have gotten a different email.
I can read it.
So it sounds like there were questions with the May thirteenth additional vouchers that perhaps.
They're not additional vouchers.
Just May thirteen vouchers?
The vouchers we approved.
No, May thirteenth would not be additional.
Thank you.
May thirteenth would be up to May thirteenth, which was around the meeting, our meeting date.
Our meeting date was on June 10th.
But we did not.
So we did not approve. So those need to, so that was what, it's probably no description. We did not approve. I think, can we, are there any other comments from the June 10th meeting minutes? Sam or Rich, do you guys have any comments?
No.
Then we can, I would suggest, or make a motion to approve the meeting minutes with the call out that the May thirteenth vouchers were not approved. Do I get a motion for that? A motion to approve the June 10th meeting minutes with the caveat that the May thirteenth vouchers listed in that meeting agenda were not approved, meeting minutes were not approved. Or we can hold until we approve the vouchers. Hold this one.
I'd move to have the minutes updated properly and we'll come on next month's meeting.
Okay. Sam has made a motion to update the June 10th meeting minutes and have a review and approve at the next town council meeting. Does that second for that motion?
I'll second.
It has been moved by Sam and seconded by Ralph that we will update the June 10th meeting minutes. And. You got a vote on it? And, oh, right. Sorry. Thank you. I did that myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is passed to update the June 10th meeting minutes or review at the next town council meeting. Okay. That was the only minutes that we needed to approve this session, this meeting. Next, we will move on to reports from committees, officers, and book pressure. We start with the book pressure. It looks like we have March additional vouchers, vouchers for the May fifteenth we discussed about, and May additional vouchers. So what are we talking about first, Joan?
The March thirty-first additional vouchers.
It says in the email, March eleventh, which is it?
Neither one you want to do.
So we're doing March eleventh versus March thirty-first?
You should have the March thirty-first ones to couple me by.
Okay. I got them March eleven. I do not have any March thirty-first. And I have June first to do the meeting.
Okay. Let's do the March eighth and wait the March thirty-first go. That's the one.
March eleventh is what I have. I have the email. How does anyone else? I'm voting down.
March eleventh, I have eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Yes.
Any questions on it?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers. Second.
Ralph.
The vote.
Ralph has moved to approve the March eleventh vouchers and Sam has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. These are approved. Now we have. May.
Joan sends the June additional vouchers and the July first to April.
Yes, I don't have any for May, but I have the June additional and July eighth.
The June additional vouchers is one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Additional? And July?
Well, let's just work on June. Yeah. Just take it back to here.
Any questions? No.
No, I'm making a motion to approve the June additional vouchers.
This is, June additional, here we go. It's been moved by Ralph and seconded by Sam to approve the June additional vouchers. Do we have, is all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. It has been approved. Seconded and approved.
Then we have the July first to the July eighth vouchers, and that's in the amount of thirty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-six cents.
What is the? What is the LRS for sharing equipment?
That's what's extra things that Bob Zokowski ordered.
Help for the new truck?
I don't know if it was on a new truck or if it was on the.
It was just.
The truck stuff.
Equipment.
Yeah. One or the other. Okay. Are there any other questions about these?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the June, July first to April vouchers.
Right. Second.
Second.
Ralph has moved to approve these, Rich has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. These are the July first to July eighth vouchers that have been approved. Now we have the May thirteenth vouchers.
I must have turned earlier.
I haven't seen them today.
I don't care when, when the, I don't know if that was the group that was held over.
It was held over from the May thirteenth meeting because of, you know, it's about, so those were pushed from May to June. And then I did not see the writing off of June, and that's not that meeting.
I will have to wait till next month because I do not have anything for May thirteenth. So we, the only other thing I have are the.
Did you not put a copy of the May thirteenth vouchers in Rich's folder from, as he showed it to me?
He may have it. I do have the June thirty payroll, if you'd like to.
So you can share that, we can approve that now as well.
Circulate it so you can peruse it and see if you want to change something.
Can you also make a note that for Park Board President Gene Paxton at the meeting?
His what?
His joining meeting.
Oh, okay. You guys, were you not letting me have, I get a motion to approve the June thirty payroll?
I make a motion to approve the July eighth payable vouchers for.
We already did the July vouchers. We're working on the payroll. Can we make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. June payroll.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Sam has moved to approve the July, June thirty payroll. Ralph has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The June thirty payroll is approved. And now we come back to.
Let's go over the June thirty payroll. I didn't have my payroll back to make my notes on it.
Okay. We'll send that.
We'll send that to Simonsen. Are you there, Joan?
It's another for the December taxes that I failed to give to you earlier.
December thirty-first payroll taxes.
Right. Okay. On the June payroll, who made the motion and who seconded it?
For June thirtieth, Sam made the motion and Ralph seconded it.
Yes.
And these were forwarded from January?
Yes, we pay them in January. We pay them the fifteenth after the closing.
January seven thirty-first payroll taxes.
Right. You've already approved the payroll. That was approved earlier.
I'll make a motion to approve the December thirty-first, twenty-four payroll.
I need a second.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Second for this one? Oh, sorry, Dr. Rich. Ralph has moved to approve the December thirty-first payroll taxes. This has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. These are December thirty-first payroll taxes, December thirty-first according from full payroll taxes are approved. What remains is any other ones, Joan, before the October thirteenth vouchers?
No, that's all the payroll stuff. That needed approval.
So now you want to go back to what? May thirteenth. It seems that I don't have that one with me as I explained earlier. Are you able to send it out for the June between the two meetings since it sounds like there's some questions?
I've got a lot from.
You've got a lot, do you?
Yeah. We had, we had a.
Oh. Did not come up in our.
Just see if I can find one.
I won't need the May thirteenth vouchers for next month, am I right?
Now we're going to see if Sam passes them. Double checking my May meeting minutes. No, it's not, am I? I know, like, we backed up the June, we said the May, we didn't get it because.
It was July, the Monday, May twelfth.
Joan, what's the title of it? And which Jones?
The March April payroll taxes.
March April.
There were three filed.
You lost the Monday there. Oh, here it is from, it's on Tuesday, June tenth, I think.
I sent it just.
You just sent it out? Okay.
Did you get the March thirty-first additional vouchers, the one you wanted separated? From the April eight?
Okay. May thirteenth, let's stick with May thirteenth vouchers. Total of, this is what we were talking about earlier, a total of two hundred nine thousand three hundred twenty dollars and ninety cents. And Sam had been talking, had some questions about these.
Yeah. That's the one who said that the transfers in order to get the loan from Horizon Bank, we transferred a hundred thousand to Horizon Bank, had twenty thousand for checking account because the payments are going to be deducted from the checking account.
So the Horizon Bank line was described as a purchase CD?
Right. And I think the council should approve something of this, if nothing else, a resolution that allowed me to do that transfer.
On Tuesday, June tenth, I wrote to Susan Cowan of Baker Tilly and copy dynam. Joan has sent accounts payable vouchers to the council for review and approval to match. She's included entries to Horizon Bank, a hundred thousand to fund a CD, and twenty thousand to establish a checking account. Should these be included in the accounts, in an accounts payable letter? Please let us know. Susan replied Wednesday, June eleventh. No, I have discussed with her that those are not payables. We are just moving funds from one of the towns' banks to the other town's bank and changing the nature of the funds in the CD from readily liquid to invested. As we are now hands-on in Keystone, which Keystone is the state accounting system, I have suggested she reach out to them directly to determine how the transaction should look. I don't know what type of guidance I gave her, but neither of those transactions would be considered a quote expense or a payable. Susan Cowan.
And Keystone is that no way to transfer funds without doing a voucher and a receipt. And that's what I did.
So a CPA is telling you incorrect information?
No. She's telling me.
Did you contact Keystone? Did you contact Keystone?
Yes, I did. Before I did it, they said that the only way to do it is to do a voucher, take it out of one bank, put it in the other bank.
You have that in your, you have to go share with the council?
I don't have it with me now.
Can you provide that to us in a future email?
I don't know if I got it in an email. A lot of things I do with Keystone is over the phone. And we do it, they help me process it through it. You want to sit here and do it your way, I don't care how you do it. If the council wants to approve me transferring funds without getting your approval, I'm all for it.
I would suggest that we get some clarity in writing from Keystone, since we have clarity from our CPA. We'd be great to get some clarity and write some direction in writing from Keystone. I don't know if it's possible to get the two on the same conversation and maybe go follow up with email, but that sounds like the right approach here so that we are doing our work correctly and don't have issues or implications.
As far as I'm concerned, I think we need something from the council since you are being so nitpicky about everything that's spent. I think we need something that says, and, and. A resolution giving me the approval to do it.
Give me the approval to do what?
We wouldn't want an approval to transfer funds from one bank to the other.
I would suggest we get direction from Keystone first, and then if we get some direction that suggests that we need to make sure that the clerk had approval, we'd be happy to do a resolution. But I think we've got direction from accountants, and we need to get direction from Keystone, and then we can move on to the next step from there. If a resolution is needed, certainly we could do that. But let's start with the direction from Keystone to understand what they're suggesting is the best way to handle this. And if you'd like one of us, a council member, to be on a call with Keystone, I'm sure we can arrange something. I'm going to have to have the whole council, I think one person is fine. So we are going to push the vouchers, approve all the May vouchers to the July meeting. And in the meantime, Joan is going to reach out to Keystone and get some written direction of how we handle transfers like this, and we can bring that back to the council meeting next one. And, oh yeah, right, August. Thank you. Wow. Time flies. Great. Do we have any other payroll taxes or vouchers that we need to approve tonight, Joan?
Yes. You requested that I separate the March voucher, and I've done that. It wasn't easy, but I have it done. I have the March thirty-first additional vouchers. And I shall that you approve the June eighth vouchers.
We approved the July eighth vouchers. Are there June eighth vouchers too?
No, it was not June. It was the April eighth. April eighth, when I presented it before, I computer printed everything that had not been printed before.
Can we ask you to separate the March?
And I separated. I separated the March thirty-first, and I have it here. It's fifty-seven thousand sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. And it's everything that is dated March thirty-first or March twenty-eighth. And that was a big problem because there was a couple of them that had an April date on it.
So can we see that for review and approval?
Sure. Kingdom.
Thank you, ma'am. Here we go.
And the March eleventh vouchers, the due retail of eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-six cents, that you approved. I think you better sign it.
Which one is this? The March eleventh we just approved. We did that, that we approved previously, we didn't just approve it. Would you not do the March eleventh? Oh, I see. Yeah, we're up at the top. Okay. So that's the March eleventh. This is the March thirty-first. We'll listen, have it printed. So does it have it printed on it?
And reviewing the vouchers for March 31st additional vouchers. There's an entry for leaf pickup services. Now, last month, this was an entry that on one of the files that we.
It was on the one that was a total March, it had March and it had also part of a.
We didn't, did we not approve that last, last month?
No, we didn't approve it. You wanted me to put, let us know what I did for this month. So.
And what was, do you have the physical copy of what you presented last month? What was the date of that?
I think the date on it had April 8th and it included March and that's the one that you were.
So on the minutes from last month, it shows that we did approve an April 8th voucher for $50,069.49. Does anyone have that?
Pretty close to that.
Yeah, that's the same one.
So that's what this has, this says April, but has April crossed out and March on it, so it sounds.
Right, the way it's programmed, I can't change the date once this is set in there and it was set in as April 8th instead of March 31st.
But then if we already approved the leaf on the April 8th, then they shouldn't be on this one, I think is what they're saying, Sam?
I'm trying to find the April 8th file. Now this one's on April 8th, I got it.
You guys need to get me a laptop.
Who's that? You're looking for that April 8th Sam from.
Yeah, I actually.
And it was approved in the June 10th meeting?
Yes. But the April page was March 31st.
So it was March 31st and June 8th?
It was March 31st.
Well then there are two March 31st charges in this one that perhaps need to be removed. Otherwise we're double charging for paying.
We're not, you're not double paying if that's.
We are.
That's a summary, these are all.
But we already approved those.
We already approved the Spain exact amount on April 8th voucher.
The 57060?
That's okay, I can change that voucher to March 31st.
I'm looking at the April 8th file that she sent out.
April 8th, okay.
It is the same amount and it's got the same thing on it. Except when I ran it through the register, I put April 8th on it because I was working in April. So then it literally was March 31st.
So you're just directly.
Look at the vouchers that are on it.
I am.
Yeah, the numbers are exactly the same.
So all you're saying is you're renaming April 8th to March 31st edition?
Which it should be. If you don't want.
So if we've already approved it for April 8th.
I can change it to March 31st, all I got to do is cross.
We already did it right here.
Yeah.
So if we already approved these as April 8th, what we originally asked was to separate March charges from the Aprils into two files and anything that shouldn't have been in March, so.
And I did that. We've got the March 31st today.
The March 31st that you gave us is exactly the same as the April 8th we approved. Therefore, we can't approve it twice, we cannot approve the same document.
That's okay, just ignore it and I will correct it on my end so that I have a corrective.
Well, my question is, are there charges in March that, since this is March 31st or April 8th, however you want to look at it.
It's all March 31st, by our research.
It goes from March 19th to March 31st. So are there charges from March 1st to March 19th that we have yet to approve?
That's on the March 13th one that you want me to.
We do, so that's what we need, so we're waiting.
March 11th, it's not March 13th, it's March 11th, which I have right here, which is $18,834.
Which we just approved this evening, so that maybe it sounds like if we have the March 11th and we have.
The March 31st.
We have the April 8th, which really only, so follow the question then. It sounds like March 11th has the first part of March, this other one has the rest of March.
Apparently that's a good deduction.
Is there a voucher, are there observer court covers April 1st to April 8th that we have approved?
Evidently not.
If it doesn't show anything on my register here. I'd like to get a, let's see, how we phrase this.
You want the April 8th?
April 1st through April 8th vouchers.
And you want the May 13 vouchers done over?
Yes, so I, we have an April 8th, April 8th vouchers that we approved last month. That really covered everything from March 8th to April.
Correct.
March, I'm sorry, March 19th through April 8th. In terms of bookkeeping, does it matter the name April 8th? We just know what date it is covered.
Well, I don't know that we need to do that.
Yeah, I think we don't, I don't think we need to.
We approved this last.
We approved it last time.
We had asked Joan to separate it out, we did that, but we don't need to vote on the, we already approved it.
Right.
Expenditures.
Well, we do need, no, it's allowed, it's a, we are listing April, chunk of April vouchers.
April 8th?
Yes.
Okay, so. Okay, what is it? Same as April 8th. No need to approve again. We need April 1st through April 8th for next month.
Thank you.
Okay. My lines are sorted out, it's that.
But I want to make it known that same June 10th email.
Yeah.
There's a ton of files including one title, one file named March 31st additional appropriations. However, when you open the file, it lists the May 13th, 2025 vouchers. And on it is a mix of what appears to be payroll taxes, garbage collection, water for the tarp, blacktop, real estate taxes, with one page and no, nothing else.
The reason that happened, did you, did you understand what I explained?
Yeah.
The way it's programmed, anything that I have not put on a register for the council previous to that will show up on the next one that I print. And that's what happened with that one. And I was not aware of that until I spoke with Keystone and asked them why these are showing up.
Yeah.
I'm not.
You made it March 31st additional appropriations.
Because that's what I started out with. It's not that easy to explain this whole frame.
Okay.
And this is probably why we didn't.
When you become full treasurer, you still.
Feel understand that. I mean, sorry, later, I'm going to tear up people's.
What are you tearing up?
March 1st is January, March 31st is April 8th, actually April 8th here. Okay. This one needs to form up as well. Okay, okay, are we ready? Are there any other vouchers?
Everybody is about bored to death.
Are there any other vouchers, payable taxes or anything else?
No, I've given it all to you. I don't know if I've gotten them all back.
No, I still have some I have to sign, but we're trying to keep this meeting going. Next up, resolutions and ordinances, as far as I'm aware, we have none covered. Awesome. And very patiently, our police chief is now willing to give us the program report.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of June, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 474 calls for service when compared to 481 in the previous year for slight decrease of second calls for service. During the month of June, 21 incident reports documented, a total of seven individuals were arrested. The majority of those were all for traffic-related offenses. Specific to the town of Mission Shores, back on June 2nd, Deputy Matthew Disbro was dispatched to 4,000 Brookside Drive in reference to two dogs that were tied to a tree. Upon his arrival and subsequent investigation, it was found that the dogs had escaped a yard nearby, were on the same leash and got tangled around the tree. He was able to find the owner and get the dog safely back to the park. July 4th, just kind of a summary, hopefully you did notice our increased presence, that started on July 3rd. And then we ran that subsequently through this past Sunday, July 6th. We responded to 94 calls for service when compared to 79 in the previous year. We made a total of two arrests that were in the town of Long Beach for underage drinking. Our police presence was very noticeable in all three communities that we served. We received many compliments, referenced a number of officers that were out on patrol and on the beach. And overall was very successful and was a safe weekend for all.
Great. I have a question. You said that the dog issue was at 4,000 Brookside Drive?
That's what I have down on the report.
That's not in a town of Mission Shores, that's in a township.
Yeah, so we responded there, so. Yes, that was a mutual aid call that we originally got the call to our 911 center, so we went. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we need to fire chief, I know that Dino is going to be here. We need that, we need that, unless you guys have it.
Do you want me to look for it?
Yeah, I thought I saw it, but I. I got the email, but not the. I did not click on it. Back here, it's forward. So, from the fire department activity for the month of June, they were recorded, about 101 hours were spent during the month. Calls, trainings, meetings, they had four meetings, no special training sessions, 24 calls. And Mission Shores, two fires, two first responders. Mission Michigan, five fires, one responder, Dylan, Ellen. And they had three mutual aid fires that they had to respond to. And Gary did not provide any additional notes or special notes, that's you guys definitely need to add. Going to be quick and short on this one. Thank you. Building Commissioner, Veronica.
Okay, I have the, I have the report for June here. We had two building permits were issued. We have pending applications at 208 Sunset and 205 Sunset. And code enforcement issues we. We sent letters to 404 El Porto and 406 El Porto about overgrown grass. We also had some issues. With 210 Sunset, we had a complaint about early morning noise and I talked with the contractor and he said that the noise would stop for that. So that's to be put in June.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council?
No.
Thank you. Park Board, I didn't see him.
Jeanette joined us.
Oh, Jeanette, that's right, you'll join us. Hey, Jeanette.
Hi. The tennis courts, pickleball courts are now complete. The resurfacing project by Skip Macho was a great collaborative effort between private donations, booster club money and tax money. And volunteers that really saved the town money by removing and reinstalling the fence. And those were Rick Pios, Skip Macho, Dennis Ayak, Ralph Fox, Bud Powell, Kevin Donegan and Steve Fetterer. Service Gate continues to do a good job at mowing and at first they didn't realize we had two nature trails. So the crew that they sent out did not realize that. So the newer nature trail got quite high for a minute. But that's been resolved. The large swing set at Kate Park has been removed. It was determined to be a liability and we removed it. The Park Board's 2026 goal is to have this and the Tyler Swing replaced. And I'd like to include some booster news. The garage sale that the town, where we had, was, it raised over $4,400. The pickleball tournament was a nice community get-together for the town. Skip had a clinic, a mini tournament and lots of giveaways that he obtained by pickleball companies. He solicited over the winner in Scottsdale. And for Park's sake, the numbers are still needing to be finalized, but they will probably net around $5,000. And lastly, there are some bad boards on the gazebo ramp and these are flagged and are awaiting a contractor to repair. Any questions?
Thanks, Jeanette.
Sure.
Do we get a written report from you?
I'll send it through.
Thank you.
Awesome. Want to you, Bob?
I didn't make the tally of our hours, I don't know about the hours that we worked in June. Contractor had to go in for air conditioning repair. There's a spot on Brookside Drive that town owns across the lake where the dog park, they tried that dog park several years ago, cleaned it all up, there's a concrete from there. And we used to put brush and limbs and stuff in there. And I would like to start doing that again. There's, we have two options, what we can do with this stuff. The one is we can dump it there and hide it, nobody leaving it up there. The second option is, there's a company right over here called Talikovich and Sons, I think it's Sons. He does all of Long Beach's leaves and he will take all of our tree limbs and things for $40 truckload. My truckloads are going to have, right now you can't really see all the debris, the leaves are up, but the fall and then we're going to.
So what you're saying is if a tree comes down and you have to cut it, get it out of the wood, we can contract with this company at 40 bucks a truckload?
No, I would have to, we would have to take it out there for 40 bucks.
Oh, we take it down and then we.
So your time, your crew's time plus 40 bucks?
Well, that's, that sounds reasonable, but.
Well, that's, that sounds reasonable, but I would like to look at this twice you're talking about. I didn't know that we tried to have a dog park.
The only, the big issue I have is in this area, they tend to dump a lot of debris. Somebody does. So I don't want to go and make that publicly known, but if you guys want to meet me sometime, I can show you where it is.
Yeah, I have to see it.
What are the size limitations of the ones you could deposit at each location?
Over there, it's any size. As long as we can pick it up with the tractor and put it in the dump truck.
Do you have limitations, like the tree that they took down on El Portal today? Did you see that one?
No.
The one that was hanging over Nipco Park, maybe the...
Oh, he took that today?
Yeah, they did that today.
Good.
So that's good news, but the bad news is it's right next to the road, so all cut up into like big chunks.
Who cut it up?
Davy. Tree service.
Come back and get this done?
That's not been our experience.
Who cut it up?
Well, at least it's cut it up.
Dinah had contacted Nipco, maybe a month and a half ago. We were getting a lot of calls, and we all was, we all saw it hanging over the road and it's been thawed. So she initiated contact with Nipco, and Nipco said they would send someone out. Well, a month and a half later, they came today. And, but, we can check with Dinah and see if she can...
Nipco, they're people that usually vision is pretty good about.
When they came through earlier this year, did a kind of a general clearing out of tree limbs, what they caught, they left. Right at the head of the nature trail, we had to pay Maple City to come cut it up and remove that big log, or I think we actually paid Mick Wolf to do some cutting of what he could and remove it. And the rest of it, we had Maple City come out and haul it away. So I think that that was also Davy and by contract through Nipco that did it. And their policy, I think, is we'll cut it, it's gonna stay, it's up to you to remove it.
Well, they did also, they also did some more, right up in the, right on the corner of Pine and Working Caves. And they took out 30 feet of underbrush and trees where the power line's gonna get. And it looked like they took all that, because that wasn't just piled up. So it could be the directions they get that day, or the guy driving the truck, and then you're really helpless.
We'll pursue that before you start hauling.
Yeah.
Also, I think since you go open up, little truck.
So before you do the little truck for the hauling away, do we want, maybe if Bob sent us, you put in now this proposal about having these guys haul it away, you guys think something we can discuss and perhaps on the next council meeting?
I think we should.
Yeah, I think you could just send us the name, everything set with the name of the company and stuff, and then we could, we could follow up on that.
What truck do you propose using to haul to the new truck? The new truck?
So yes, now it's...
Well, we said new car.
We all have that new car tomorrow, everybody.
Who would make the concern? I made $20,000 on the Ford AR dump truck. Thank you. Jed Schaefer, 10-750 Prospect Hill, Brooklyn, Michigan, is the phone number.
I'll make a motion.
What?
No motion yet. Kevin Jeffers truck bid at $10,800. So I'll be calling Mr. Jed Schaefer in the morning. Joan, how do you, you want this cashier's check, or how do you want them to pay that?
Do you need ones? That would be, that's why I gave, I also would like copies, but I'm writing.
I'll make you something there.
So I think the council needs to cycle, they may not be able to let me have accept the bid.
Yes.
Yes.
So you need to accept this bid, or?
Yes. So I am sorry to make a motion to accept the bid of $20,000 from Jed Schaefer, is that his correct name?
Jed Schaefer, S-C-H-A-E-F-E-R.
All right.
How much longer to accept that?
Bid? Can I get a second for that?
I'm hardly excited.
Ralph?
I have an appointment right now.
Fire chief?
Motion.
Yes, we can afford your representation.
Second. All in favor of the motion for Jeff Schaefer to buy the truck, say aye.
Aye.
Alco, say nay. Jed, Davy, it's worth it. The motion is through. Got a lot going on tonight, Bob, anything else?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much.
Bob? Did, do you ever talk to, I'm sure you do that, Rick, on the other side of the room? About a week ago, there was a young kid walking around with some company for the Michigan Electric. And he was talking that they're looking to put their lives underground.
That's the first I've heard that. Nipco would never do that.
I would love to think that.
They're paying too costly, Nipco likes them, not them too much. Should have been done when we started.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Next up on the agenda is meat, because Dinah's not here for the white dish, but we... Help, Dinah, are you online?
Yes. There is nothing new to report, because there was no meeting, so at least I can tell you that much. No meeting today, they were all at the fair.
Okay. For both?
That's for Granny Ford.
Pardon?
For both the white dish and the...
Nothing new with the Nersey.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, on the website and technology, the website topic's about the saves last year, with a couple bots that were trying to prevent setting. The service that we use kind of takes care of that. But if you see, it makes it look like whoever was studying those bots come from desktops, not mobile, so it looks like they're desktop traffic. But it's sort of not. It's really the same, lots of people using search, lots of people using their phones. And in terms of important pages, the events pages, fellow events really drove a lot of traffic. Not surprising, the beach got 37 page, doesn't have a lot, but it drove a lot of traffic. And the orangutan litter speed seems to be the new favorite base of species, taken over the gully, I'm sure. King Lake Park, I think some of the leaders go home, that also drove traffic. We had eight, no, we had nine contact us forms, questions from people coming in this month. And that is all on that. Also, under technology, website technology, I have a call with the firm that works with the Indiana Office of Technology about office suites, Microsoft or Google. Been trying to get it on the books with them to talk about our options. Interestingly, I've been told that Microsoft suite was not an option, which I know is Joan's favorite, but they're bringing that back to the table, so I'll find out what that means. And that is all. So, next, we move to unfinished business. The first thing up is an update on the codification of the town code. We have a committee together, we are meeting this weekend to kick off kind of our process, so we will report back the next town council meeting. I think our goal is to review the proposal we have from the vendor and kind of keep it off and do all the official things. The committee is myself, Ralph, Trias Masak, and Amy Lott. So, got some lawyers, got a town council, we got...
What was it that we did? Is that open to the public?
Anyone who wants to be on the committee can join us if you'd like to be on it, there'll be Zoom calls.
Oh, it's Zoom call?
Yeah. Update on road paving. Whoever wants, I'll be...
Can I take that?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. All right, the only thing I wanted to report is that I had gotten an email from Clara Chun with regards to a dimple in the road at Sunset. When I went outside, you know, here I am, walking around my house, and there are actually two dimples right up here at the head of Okagan, before, you know, that's right at the north end. So they're like about two and a half inches, three inches deep, and about seven inches wide, maybe. So you could actually step into it in this stuff, you know, like especially if you're walking early in the morning, maybe a dust. I take, now we have a puppy in here, I'm taking care of. So for instance, I could easily fall into that, I know myself. So Jeanette was going to be talking to them about making sure that those dimples don't exist in other places. Okay, so that was just my update on that. And then I did make note that I think Joan wrote that there were people asking questions about potholes that ends up roads where your paving actually took place. So I don't know if anybody else has received anything from Jeanette, but that was the only thing she just responded to me on the, on those dimples.
The problem that she's referring to, the water valve there?
What those dimples are?
There's a shut off or something that we lift the water.
There are some, there are two, and they probably are. However, they are holes in the ground. All right, so it is dangerous. And number two, they're gonna start crumbling, you know, and we'll have bigger potholes over there that are bigger and wide and maybe even deeper. And yes, there were covers there, and I had actually contacted, you know, global engineering with regards to that early on, because one of them was sticking up with no cover, and the cover had been probably pulled off by either one of their machines or somebody else speeding through. And it was literally in the middle of the road. So I went and moved it over to the side of the road, then I took a look at that. We put, Ray and I actually put up the, the sign about not driving, you know, because that was left tossed on our lawn that night, because I was afraid somebody can go through and either break that open or actually, you know, cause some kind of damage. I didn't allow us to be liable for it. So then, the Nipco came out right away that evening, and then to take a look at it, and I spoke with Shem, and Shem called in, I guess the, Reece Riley, and they came out, because they know how to cover that and do that. So anyway, that's what Jeanette said, that they're supposed to come back and take a look at this and make sure that it's, you know, safe.
Because the water department would rise your on, so they're not, they're like...
So we can, the dimples are from the water? Does the water from the water?
Well, it's, it's...
No, these are not water valves, not the ones fighting, it's not water valves. We know that already.
These are something else.
No.
Okay, Nipco agreed, these were gas to begin with. But it's, you know, one of them may be lying, one may not, they're directly on the line with the gas. So nothing to do with water, but there were two actual, you know, and they were Nipco, that's what you want.
You got the female about Sunset did the water.
Okay, that could be, I don't know.
I didn't know anything about the other.
Yeah. That's all. But, you know, I don't think that this is for us to actually cover and worry about. This is something we have to go back to the company that's covering it, and the engineering firm to make sure that that job is completely done. So.
So I signed up for the updates, and I only received one update.
Yes.
Early on in the project.
Same.
I didn't receive any updates during the course of the project. And it looks like all the asphalt's done, they just need to do the, the painting that they do with stop signs and...
Right.
I don't know what it's called.
Right.
But I haven't seen about today.
Yeah. I mean, and the painting, and then who was, Dinah, does anyone else need to follow up with that about these dimples or water valves? It sounds like...
Well, I reached out to Jeanette, you know, I did it twice, because I reached out to her Sunday evening, or very early Monday morning, and then I reached out to her again today, and she got back to me. So she said they will be taking care of it. So if we don't hear anything, if I don't hear anything from her tomorrow, then I'll contact her again.
Okay, that has come out of this, you know, most people talk about holes in the road. Of course, that's not the purpose of the paving project per se. There are potholes in areas that were not repaid. So, I don't know if you keep a running list, Bob, but we should probably collect up the feedback we've gotten and pick the worst ones and start looking.
The other day, I spoke to London on Florida with Oakdale, that we had to plan out. I asked Reece Riley to do it when they were here, but didn't have any interest.
Okay. Thank you. I have here an update on message board.
Yeah, so...
That's the one by town, right at the office.
We have a third message board, and I'm trying to enlist Rich and his brother to help me stop it. We talked about it the other day, and I'm trying to coordinate, yeah.
Okay.
There's actually two of them.
And then?
This thing.
I think they just sent extra posts.
Those two.
We didn't pay for the extra.
No.
Rich, you and I should go in there and take a look.
We had a ghost that accepted those, like you never figure out who accepted them. And when I contacted the company, they said, forget it, just send you the...
So Bob, where were they at?
Get the, the portal signed.
Last item under unfinished business is an update on letters sent to property owners regarding the yard upkeep. Brian reported on that, and gives a report. He sent letters to 446 and 44 El Portal. 406 removed, 404 remains overgrown, so I think that's our report there.
So there are a few more properties that had like vehicles parked in the yard and piles of debris. In the next week, I'm going to get some more letters together to go out to those people.
I've asked Brian to take the list of, presented of a dozen or so potential properties that need attention, and start to document them and come up with a suggested plan of action against, write a letter, or what have you, depending on the circumstances. And then also making sure that we, when we notify the property owners, that we tie it back to where the ordinances, that we have issues. So, I'll be working with Brian on that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think there's a few more that can go out by next Friday, I can get it to them.
And before we do that, we'll, we'll make sure that the council members are aware of what we're doing.
Great.
Of consensus.
Thank you. Next up, due to business, I am over here studying budget meetings for 2026.
I can't believe it's that time already in the room.
So we're gonna need to, which meetings are up first, Joan?
What?
Which budget meetings are up first?
Well, first, it's going to be with council members and the park council, if they just let me know what they want in the budget.
So do we have a date that we want to have?
I haven't looked at a date, but I have looked at the appropriations we had last year, and I think we're going to have to be doing some additionals, but more money was spent than what we actually had appropriated.
So when do, when do they need to have, when does the town council and the department that's need to have that?
I would think sometime in the next couple weeks.
Can we set a date?
Sure can, because I want to get the appropriation report to you, so you know what's been spent.
We did, and so let's set the date?
I don't have a calendar.
And then you do an executive meeting, is not what we're gonna ask?
It doesn't have to be an executive meeting, it's just a budget meeting. We do have to host it, but, yes.
We can host a budget meeting, it's a public meeting, right?
Yes, it's just a public meeting.
Yeah. So you're saying in the next two weeks?
Yeah, what's your calendar say?
We may have to, so, before the end of the month?
Definitely before the end of the month.
Kim, you're on the 22nd?
I'd be available the 14th, 15th, and then the following. I'd be available the 14th, 15th, and then the following week.
22nd, speak for me.
22nd, since that's a Tuesday night, you can go, it's, that's the, two, that's the...
And what's up?
That's the fourth Tuesday, so everything going on? Okay, let's, let's go for Tuesday, the 22nd, let's see if we can make that work at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, 7:22.
What date did you say? I'm sorry.
22nd, Diana, Tuesday.
I'll find it for you.
Okay, at 7:00 AM.
Anything you, council wants to know before the meeting.
First, what about the budget, right, or appropriations, is that what you bring to it?
I can send you a copy of the appropriations after I write checks for June.
Okay.
Or lie rather.
That'd be great.
Look at what's been spent.
That'd be awesome. Okay.
That's an in-person meeting.
Yeah, um, I think so, okay.
She don't, we cancel that meeting for her.
What's that?
Historically, I've not come to a budget meeting.
No, we've never had to at budget meetings, you're right.
I mean, it's going to be with Joan.
Right, who's going to be with?
Yeah, okay.
And the main thing I need to know is what kind of money you want to spend for next year, and then work with Susan as to whether we can work it out or not.
Okay, next up, Brad, it's you.
We'll have a training report, at least nothing for public consumption, unless the Lord has questions.
All right, got it. Um, this lane's business, I had notes here, the stop sign down, I walked on the act, and I think you got that one back up, right?
It's temporarily up. I need to order some signposts. Signposts themselves are not that expensive, however, the shipping is quite costly. I'm just going to wait on prices.
Um, I have a note about a few of vacant lots littering dumping pet waste.
Yes.
I think that's probably a lot of the time.
I, I made, I made that, uh, you know, note over here because I've gotten several comments, um, not just from, you know, within our town, you know, offices and all, but, you know, several people complaining that, uh, there's littering taking place, they've seen people come and dump, you know, trees and branches and so, so forth. Uh, and then, of course, there were complaints about pet waste, so, you know, I, you know, I, what are you going to do? We can't, we're not going to patrol the town for pet waste, but, you know, maybe we stick up some kind of a sign at the entrance of the town that says, you know, pick up after your dogs. I know we say it in our, in our, you know, newsletters, and I, we've said it, I think we've said that in the past. Uh, I'm pretty sure about it, maybe even on the website, I don't know, but, um, uh, littering and dumping, you know, Sam and I had a short conversation earlier today. Well, you know, the town can handle their own, but we're not going to handle anybody else's, like, as a town, you know, to clean theirs up, so I don't know what more we can do with regards to, you know, to the complaints. That's it for me.
I think, I think, um, there's been a couple, we had a notification from a resident on Road 1 about a tree on a town-owned block that, well, it fell, and the property owner wants us to remove the tree. I looked at the tree, think others may have. Um, it's in need of trimming. I had Chris Wolf, um, take a look at it. He indicated, his opinion was that the tree is still healthy and viable, and that, but it does need pretty significant, um, trimming. It is an oak tree, so you can't trim in the summertime where it, uh, threatened to have a disease. Um, so we would be looking at, uh, late September, October before we could do that. Um, Bobby, you may want to go by, it's in the 400 block of, uh, Road 1, um, and see if you can, uh, pull out the dead lot or the, the dead limb and move it. I don't, it's not, it's not, the tree, in my opinion, is not threatening the property owner's, um, home.
Where is this at?
405 Roadland.
405 Roadland?
I believe so, in the town.
No, it's Dreamwall.
Dreamwall.
It's Dreamwall, okay. Sorry, 405 Dreamwall, and, um, and it raised an issue that I brought up with the rest of the council members about the ownership of town lots like that and the potential liability, and it's something that I think the council needs to address and look at and evaluate, whether or not these top, these orphan lots that we have that are not part of the contiguous run along White Ditch and the nature trails, whether or not they're more liability than they're worth, and would they be worth something to the property owners on either side?
As a separate, yeah.
They're not built of lots, they're 40 feet lots, so.
Okay, excuse me, uh, Sam, I think it's 415 Dreamwall, not 405.
Okay, I should be correct.
415, because it's Scully, Richard Scully who contacted us about that, I believe.
Yes, correct.
Thank you, Diana.
So I think the, the topic of the lot should come up, you know. Uh, Diana, you added on your broken traffic issues?
Um, well, some of the comments, I know you may have noticed them as well, uh, for, they were, a lot of people are making comments on, I think it was on Nextdoor. Um, I got a phone call, it happened to be from a family member, you know, but I got a phone call, and they were saying how danger it was, dangerous it was turning in and out of Michiana, you know, especially over this weekend, you know, feeling that, you know, all the increased business just to the east of us is, you know, creating some traffic and whatever. So I explained that we cannot handle anything that takes place out on the road, not on Highway 12. We can't even do anything on Old Grand B Street because it doesn't belong to us. Uh, but I said it is an issue, and I just wanted to bring this up, that, you know, I don't know how, you know, whether we should start approaching, you know, Michigan City or the county, or even the state for Highway 12, uh, to see about, do we need any kind of warning lights, you know, and things like that put out? So it's not just, you know, my niece had called me, but it's, you know, comments that I've read, you know, through that, uh, uh, people commenting in general, you know, on Nextdoor about increased traffic now, uh, all over the place. So I thought that might be something for us to consider, either, you know, looking at, do we petition somebody just like we did, ask some in the past, take a look at how much traffic is coming into it? You know, granted, on the day they look, oh, no problem, you know, everything is good, nobody ran a light. I mean, nobody ran a stop sign.
Well, I, I think it's good to ask those authorities, but the question I would ask is, if a generic person is saying there's increased traffic, we can't make any decisions based on that information. We have to go to, uh, the, the appropriate groups and have them provide data, and whether they'll help us resolve it or not, but...
Well, and I'm not even thinking, oh, I'm sorry, I meant joking, that us to do it ourselves, but, you know, like, just like in the past, we contacted, uh, people to check the traffic on, uh, Old Grand B Street, you know, where it comes up to El Portal, because, you know, we complained about people running that stop sign. We did get another approved, you know, stop sign at that point, you know, so we, it, that worked to do that. You know, we reached out to Michigan City and NIPSCO to get a new light bulb put in at the entrance, because if you remember before, we had a literal night light, you know, as far as I'm concerned. I don't even know if this one works all the time now, because I know for sure it wasn't working one night when Randy and I were coming back. So, you know, I'm thinking that maybe as a town, we, we, you know, can make some suggestions or something to the other entities, you know, I understand that we can't do it, but maybe we reach out to them.
So, um, Diana, do you or someone want to take that on about making?
I, I did it in the past, I have some names of people I talked to, so I can reach out and, and try to find that there too. And I think, uh, if Chief Swistick is still at the meeting, you know, Chief may have some contacts for us to, you know, talk to too.
I, I would recommend contacting Senator Bohacek. We spoke on July 4th on Friday about 212 and 12. I guess he's been speaking, he's been speaking with some of the state engineers. Um, there's more information he can probably share with you that I probably shouldn't share tonight because I don't know if it's for public consumption yet, but I know he's at least looking at that intersection. I don't know about the intersecting roads like, you know, Moore Road, Dune Beach, Old Green Beach Road, but I will definitely reach out to Senator Bohacek because he did share with me that he is working with some of the traffic engineers, looking at 212 and 12.
Great, okay, great, thank you, thank you.
Great, uh, communication received, Diana or Joan, do you have any?
I've turned out everything I get over to the council.
We had, Diana and I had a text from a resident on, uh, Oakdale and El Portal, um, about a fallen tree in a neighbor's yard, and how they felt like, um, the neighbor did their best to move it onto another neighbor's yard, so I don't know what we, uh, what we can do about that. Then the other communication we did receive was the fallen tree on, um, not where, what?
Greenwall?
Yeah, the front end of Greenwall.
Yes.
That was a lot.
That was a lot.
We have any public comments? Any additional council comments?
Uh, you know what, just one comment, I, uh, it was brought to my attention that, um, the Realtor, or Realtor who posted 3850 Brookside, you know, for sale, it's a house that's literally around the corner from us, uh, across from the ditch, and the Realtor in there states that the people are, you know, it looked how big it is, you know, four laps and whatever, and you see them put a pool in, blah, 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 all kinds of additions, so the question came to me, saying, well, should the Realtors actually be saying this? You know, when they're out and out, you know, mistaken, uh, they don't know or whatever. Uh, so, uh, I did reach out to the Realtor, she act, well, no, actually someone else reached out to the Realtor. Uh, that was, and then, uh, the Realtor reached out to me, so she just left me a voicemail because I was at home to set you room, so I tried calling her, she did not respond, so I'll be back in touch with her just to find out, but that was a communication we received.
I, I just want to make one, uh, small comment about the, what, uh, Gene talked about from the park board and the completion of the pickleball court, tennis court improvement. Um, as you guys are aware, the town, um, approved, the council approved authorization of $5,000 to be contributed to that fund. The rest of the monies were raised by the system through the booster, Park, Michigan Shores Park Booster, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. Uh, the boosters themselves contributed $5,000 out of their reserve fund, and then through a capital, uh, uh, drive initiated by Skip Matho, uh, over $9,000 was raised to private donors. So I just want to recognize that, and, uh, through the efforts, through the town, uh, grab sale, and through the arts for Parksake, there's a mission, uh, from the boosters to, uh, replace some of the, uh, playground equipment in, uh, King Cane Park. And, uh, I hope that the town recognizes, uh, the council and all the others, uh, and the town recognize the value that the boosters are providing. Uh, it's a group of individuals that live here, uh, and care for the community, work hard, uh, physically, and, uh, uh, to, to get things done around here, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Then at 8:26 PM, I call the Sweden German, and you all.